All right. Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 23, 2022. I'm very excited to see faces in the room. We've got some council members and our city manager here up on the dais. We've got staff, and we have some council members remote. This is our first hybrid, truly hybrid, City Council meeting. So if you'll have a little patience with us in case we need to tweak anything, we appreciate that. So, welcome to the Agoura Hills City Council meeting. Consistent with the governor's orders, this meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers and also by utilizing video conferencing. All attendees in the council chambers will be required to follow current state and county public health guidelines as posted on the doors. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices and do not access Zoom during the live meeting as it will cause interference with the audiovisual system in the council chambers. Tonight's meeting is also being conducted utilizing video conferencing and electronic means consistent with AB 361 and may be viewed on Zoom via the link on the agenda, by live stream on YouTube by entering "Agoura Hills City Council Meeting" in your browser and clicking on the link for March 23, 2022, or view the live or archived meeting on the city's website at agourahillcity.org and click on the "Watch Meetings" online button. And now I will defer to City Clerk Kimberly Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. There will be an opportunity for the public to speak on any item listed on the agenda. Any person in the council chambers who wishes to speak or submit a written comment is requested to complete a public comment card for each item and submit to the clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. Comments submitted at the meeting will be provided to the City Council for review and filed with the official record. For any person participating remotely, written public comments were requested to be emailed by 4:00 p.m. today and distributed to the City Council in advance of the meeting. To request a speak during public comment, please click on the "Raise Hand" button on the Zoom toolbar. Request to speak must be received prior to the mayor closing the public comment portion of the item. Public testimony for all speakers is limited to three minutes per speaker. Written public comments will not be read aloud by the clerk. For full details, please refer to the Public Participation section on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will call this meeting to order. And I'm going to go a little rogue here, and I'm going to ask our city manager to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance because this is his first meeting actually on the dais. He started in this role during COVID. So, Mr. Hamburger, would you lead us in the pledge? Thank you, Mr. Hamburger. All right, and with that, I will defer to the City Clerk for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Here.
Councilmember Northrup?
Here.
Councilmember Weber?
Here.
Mayor Protem Anstead?
Here.
Mayor Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Lopez, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We did not have closed session tonight, so there is no report. And now we will move to the approval of agenda. And will the maker of the motion to approve the agenda and the second, please state your names when you make the motion.
Councilmember Elise Buckley-Weber moves to approve tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Northrup, seconds.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, and so I will defer to the City Clerk for a vote.
Councilmember Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval five to zero.
Thank you. We have no presentations tonight, so we will move to Intergovernmental, Special Purpose Committee, and Departmental Reports with an update on SB 1383 implementation, an update on this bill from this law. I'm going to defer to Louis Selaya so we can get an update from Waste Management.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This evening, I'd like to present to you representatives from Waste Management who are going to share their implementation of SB 1383 and give you an update on what they're doing. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Denise Kane. Looks like she is on, so I will turn it over to Denise. It's all yours, Denise.
My apologies. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lopez, members of council, staff, and community members. My name is Denise Kane, I'm Public Sector Recycling and Organics educator for WM. Also with me this evening is A.J. Singh, Senior District Manager, Kimberly Ort, Area Manager, Public Sector Solutions, and Mr. Steve Lee, District Operations Manager. If you haven't already heard the news, it's official. WM has dropped the ACE and the management and will just be known as WM. We want to thank you guys for this opportunity to share the amazing recycling advancements made here in Agoura Hills. Just as an overview, before we get to the city's data, the new mandate, SB 1383, builds on previous legislations, AB 341 and AB 1826. And those bills introduce mandatory recycling and organic collection requirements. SB 1383 just so happens to be the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted in California since I started in this industry more than 30 years ago. Specifically, it requires the state to reduce organic waste disposal by 75% by the year 2025, just around the corner. This means that more than 20 million tons annually must be diverted from our landfills. The objectives of SB 1383 are to slow the effects of climate change by diverting materials from the landfill, reducing methane gas, and to recover 20% of currently disposed of edible food and redirect it to Californians in need. A lot of people ask what organic material is. In a nutshell, organic materials include food scraps, green waste in your yard trimmings. While there may be some variation from city to city, organic materials are typically comprised of all your food scraps, including meat, bones, dairy, bread, fruits, and of course, your coffee grounds. And as we trace the path from the kitchen to the cart, mixed organic food waste is collected, screened for contaminants, and ultimately transferred to an approved processing facility permitted for mixed organics. In the event that this is no longer an option and as our volumes grow, we would simply transfer that material to our Sun Valley operation. Just wanted to bring a little attention to our Smart Truck technology so all of you know how things operate more currently. You can see our commitment to sustainability and innovation right on the streets of Agoura Hills every day. Our trucks are outfitted with technology that help us collect your waste more efficiently, safeguard your neighborhoods, and reduce our impact on the environment. At its essence, Smart Truck technology consists of cameras mounted on a collection vehicle that create a video record of the collection events, the contents, and the collected containers. That video information is then included into our systems. Real-time integration provides an address, location, service information for that customer, and ultimately, communication with our customer care team. So what does this really all mean for Agoura Hills? Well, there's some really great news. The city of Agoura Hills has really embraced AB 341, AB 1826, and now SB 1383. Currently, all commercial establishments have services for trash, recycling, and organics in place. There are 136 establishments that have been granted waivers based on information provided on their application. And that could be space constraints, not a producer, just don't meet the guidelines that would have them implement a program at their location. So what does this really mean for Agoura? You guys are 100% compliant with California state mandates. The city is truly one of the leaders in the state, and you should be really proud of this accomplishment. Congratulations to the staff working so hard to meet these goals. Just as referenced, there's a total customer count of 209 commercial properties. There's a total residential count of about 5,395. And of all that, you have 73 customers with three container service, meaning that they have their trash, they have recycling, and now they have their organics all set up. So, on behalf of WM, we want to thank you again for giving us this time to bring you up to speed on the city's progress. We'd also like to thank the business community for their participation. The city of Agoura has been an incredible partner, and we are really grateful for the opportunity to service this community. And if you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you, Denise. Do any of the members of the council have any questions for the staff? Go ahead, Elise.
I have two questions. So the first question is, there seems to be confusion, of course, because we're on the county line of Los Angeles County, Ventura County. But it's my understanding that you cannot use a plastic bag for your scraps and then put it in the yard bin. Some haulers are accepting biodegradable plastic bags. Can you just please clear that up for our community?
Sure. Yes. In a nutshell, right now, because bags pose such a mechanical error, failure for us, we're requesting that no plastic bags be used, not even biodegradable bags. And the reason is, we turn over our material much faster than the average homeowner that would be using a compostable bag. Compostable bags will be coming up in discussion. For right now, we're suggesting that you use a brown paper bag. If you need to, if you're worried about the cleanliness of your containers, we suggest that you use, you know, a bowl or something by the side of your sink. And then as you're getting ready to throw it away, put it into that bag and then put that bag into your container. Otherwise, you can line it with newspaper and other items that will break down. It's all about the recipe. So as we learn, as we see the material coming in, we'll be able to accept and change the education so we can better suit the neighborhoods. But for right now, we're asking for no bags, plastic bags.
Thank you. That's really helpful. My second question is, the paper, like a label that's on the outside of the skin of an orange or an avocado, is that allowed to go into the bin? Or do you have to separate the label off of the fruit and vegetable before you put the skin in the organics waste container?
Every extra step that somebody takes is always appreciated. But we do have processes in place to mitigate those little factors. And it's not so much the label that's on your banana or your apple as it is a plastic bag or the wrong materials put into that container.
Thank you. That's all the questions that I have.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? I have a couple, but I'll go last. Okay, hearing none. Thank you so much. That is a great update, and I echo your pride for Agoura Hills. I know that it's not been an easy transition. And, you know, we thank you for your partnership in getting us to where we are. So one clarification I hope you can make is, when you say we're 100% compliant, does that mean that all of the HOAs and the apartment buildings, places that did not have green bins individually, has that all been worked out? Because I know for some of the apartments and condos that didn't have their own green bins, I wasn't sure if they would get one or if there would be a communal one. Maybe you can help explain how that process has gone.
So for multifamily in particular, we've decided that it was best to use cart service for them. They'll be serviced once a week or twice a week, depending on their need, depending on their growth. We've implemented those programs for each of them. It's more of a, here is your container, here are the instructions. We've reached out to all of the HOAs. We've sent them all the materials that they needed, provided special materials just in case they weren't sure how they could reach the residents. Sorry. And in addition to that, we've allowed ourselves to be their advocate. So if they have questions or if there's residents that have questions, they can certainly reach out to our team for all of those answers. So to answer the question, yes, we have implemented programs at each of them. Containers are on the way, and by April 1st, everybody will be up to speed.
Great. Thank you. And my other question is, can you clarify, so the organics is not going to the Calabasas landfill? It's going straight to Sun Valley? Or where physically are, what's the path when it leaves our curb?
It's my understanding that Calabasas doesn't currently have the correct permits to accept the organic waste. And I believe that they're all in the processes of doing that. I think I could defer to A.J., perhaps, for maybe an update on that?
Sure. Let me go ahead and introduce myself first.
Oh, I'm so sorry. My apologies.
No, I'm fairly new, so a lot of new faces on this call. So my name's A.J. Singh. I'm a Senior District Manager here at your local Waste Management site. I'm fairly new to the company. I've been here only about 10 years. If you know the trash world, that is extremely new. Very excited to, you know, first, I want to echo what Denise said. Staff has been extraordinary in their efforts to keep Agoura Hills compliant and at the forefront of landfill avoidance. And just incredible effort. Little bit by myself, been around in Southern California, different roles with Waste Management. Prior to that, I was in the U.S. Army. Found my home when I got out of Waste Management and decided not to leave. So, again, very proud to be here, very proud to be working with staff. So currently, we do take our material to the Simi Valley Recycling Center. From there, we have a local processing area that we process our material. We also take some of that material to the Sun Valley yard as well. And so, as implementation of organics really gets popularized, we are looking at ensuring that Agoura Hills has enough capacity on the back end. And so we have multiple outlets, and we'll continue to refine that process as the implementation of SB 1383 becomes more commonplace within the communities.
Thank you. So you're saying that Calabasas, the landfill there, will be able to process it in the future? I guess my question is, we're not cutting off our nose just to spite our face to try to save, you know, reduce greenhouse gases, but then have to haul a tremendous amount of waste to, you know, Sun Valley or wherever it may end up? That seems like it's...
That's something I would have to follow up on, and I can get back to you on the Calabasas permitting. I know we've been in talks quite a bit as far as refining that process. So I will get back to you with the timeline on what materials and the capacities they have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council staff? All right, thank you for your time. We're all in this together, so appreciate the partnership.
Thank you.
All right. With that, you know what time it is? It is my favorite time of every council meeting, at least in 2022. The city of Agoura Hills 40th anniversary, 40 facts for 40 years. So we've got Romero Adeva manning the slides in the background. The first slide is about the nature of our name. And I think it's very interesting that we may all be spelling Agoura Hills wrong all this time, but we're named after Pierre Agoure, a French immigrant who was a sheep herder. And his last name was spelled A-G-O-U-R-E. But when we became, when, it was before we became a city, but when the post office opened, we're not sure if it was intentional or if it was a typo. But the city was named Agoura, and they changed the E to an A. So our namesake, Pierre Agoure, actually ended in an E. But, you know, we're spelling it wrong all these years. It's our town. We love it. So anyway, that's the history of the name of Agoura Hills. Again, we became incorporated in 1982 and added the hills, but Agoura is named after Pierre Agoure. And I'm probably massacring that pronunciation anyway. Okay, the next fun fact, we go forward many, many years, and it's which of the following pop icons hails from Agoura Hills? Here are your choices. First one is Linkin Park, which is a very popular band. Second one, Huber Stank, also a popular band. And the third one, Heather Graham, who is an actress. So which of the pop icons is from Agoura Hills? Okay, Linkin, all of them. Very good, very good. All of them are from Agoura Hills. Linkin Park is an American rock band formed in 1996 in Agoura Hills. I'm pretty sure they went to Agoura High School. Rose to international fame with their debut solo album, Hybrid Theory, in 2000, year 2000. And they've sold over 100 million records worldwide. Huber Stank is an American rock band formed in 1994 in Agoura Hills. Six albums, 10 million records worldwide, and best known for their single in 2004 called "The Reason." And Heather Graham is an American actress who moved to Agoura Hills when she was nine years old. And she was in, she's had some acting accomplishments such as Roller Girl, Boogie Nights, Bowfinger, and Austin Powers, The Spy Who Shagged Me. And another interesting fact about Heather is that she supported the climate change campaign known as Global Cool in 2007. So, you know, very happy to see that celebrities with Agoura Hills roots are championing sustainability. And I have no doubt that growing up in this beautiful area has contributed to that. So we will, again, as always, put these up on social media. And, you know, our community really likes to learn about these things. So thank you for indulging during this time. All right, next on the agenda, the Las Virginas-Malibu Council of Governments update, and I will defer to Councilmember Weber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am the alternate to the Council of Governments. And Mayor Protem Anstead was out of town, so he couldn't attend. So I did in his place. Real quickly, the Executive's Report included, there was an update on the COGS Homeless Working Group and the Highway Working Group. Terry Dipple, our executive director, who put it on the grant application to fund the update for the COGS Hazard Vitrification Plan and the status of the County Homeless Grant as well. We also had a visit by Senator Ben Allen, joined the meeting, introduced himself to the governing board and the city managers, and gave an update on some of what he's going to be focusing on. Governing Board also discussed the Sheriff's Department Budget Moratorium on the expansion of the services. And we all agreed to send a letter urging the Board of Supervisors and the sheriff to find some common ground on this. Also, on some action items, the governing board approved a one-year extension to Gabriel Graham's contract to provide homeless outreach services. As you know, Gabriel done a marvelous job in outreach in the five cities and contacting the different homeless individuals and groups and giving some much-needed help and some advice. So we're pleased to have him in front of the year. The governing board also appointed Steve Yearling, who was a Malibu City Council member, to replace Mikey Pearson, the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. The COGS always had an appointed member of the Malibu City Council as a representative. So we hope Steve does well. Mikey had to step down from that particular position. The governing board also took a vote to oppose the Board of Supervisors' opposed relocation of juvenile wards from a Berry-Nidorf Center in Somar to Camp Kilpatrick, which is located in the Santa Monica Mountains between Malibu and Westlake and Agoura Hills. The action was taken because the Board of Supervisors was voting on that motion during our COG meeting. The count, the governing board also considered taking action on the opposed initiative from the California Business Roundtable. That would limit the ability of local governments to raise revenue. The matter was continued to the April meeting when the W representatives and also from Cal State's presented some respective positions upon this item. With that, if any questions on this particular executive information? I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Weber. Any questions from fellow council members?
I have, Madam Mayor, thank you. I have not a question but comments about that. And I can either wait till the comment period, or I can address some now, whichever you prefer.
Let's do it now, please.
Okay, thank you. I was immediately called after the supervisors' meeting, actually emailed, and I was asked, did you know that Agoura Hills just opposed the Camp Kilpatrick measure that was brought by your supervisor, Sheila Kuehl? I had no idea what the person was talking about and started to scramble around to see if I could find out. Now, I'm not here tonight to get into the merits at all about Camp Kilpatrick or not, unless the council wants to agendize that for another day, but that's not my request. My request was that I then went through what our norms require for the city of Agoura Hills, and I spoke to Councilmember Weber. I watched the COG meeting. I listened to the testimony before the Board of Supervisors. And, you know, I was upset, to be honest, because now it was written up in The Times, it was written up in the Daily Journal, and it said, you know, that we oppose this when it never came to our council to discuss. And from my experience of serving twice on the COG, we did nothing that, we'd never sent letters to our state senator or our electeds at all unless the issue came back to the full council. And on occasion, there'd be no time to come back to the full council. And we just said, well, then I guess we won't be able to do it as a COG group. We'll have to do it individually from our own cities because there wasn't going to be enough time. And so I would like to request, number one, and I know this adds work to everybody, but I would like to see a copy of the COG agenda when it comes out every month so that I can look it over and see if it rings any bells for me. Because had I seen that, again, I'm not talking about the merits one way or the other, but I would have looked at this as something that would need to come to the full council to discuss before we would have our elected person take, you know, take a vote on it. And I can't speak for the rest of the cities in the COG area. I'm only speaking for the city of Agoura Hills. But we actually have a legislative platform that we have spent a tremendous amount of time on. And during COVID, at some point, we revisited and voted and supported. I think that was less than a year ago. And the purpose of that is so that our city manager can write letters in a hurry to our electeds without having to come to the full council if it complies and, you know, is part of our legislative platform. This issue is outside of our legislative platform. There's no doubt about it. And I just, for the future, moving forward, I do not... And I just, for the future, moving forward, I do not want any COG member to either be put on the hot spot of having to make a decision that hasn't come before all of us or to vote without talking to all of us. At a minimum, if the council member, the voting council member reaches out, when they get the agenda, if they reach out to the city manager, the city manager can take a look at it and help talk to the mayor or see what's our next step. Particularly, you know, Supervisor Kuehl is our elected official and has been very transparent and forthcoming with the city of Agoura Hills. And whether we agree with her or we don't agree with her, she deserves the courtesy and the respect from our city if, you know, to at least have the full council weigh in on something if we're going to oppose a measure of hers. So again, I'd like to recommend that the city manager send the agenda to all council members who would want it so that we, if we need to bring something to everyone's attention. And then I'd also like to see our city manager go to the COG working group, which is amongst the other city managers, and see about if the COG can come up with some sort of a policy or procedure that they would then bring back to each city council on how we're going to deal with this going forward. I know when I was president of the COG, the COG did not want to come up with a legislative platform. I know when I was president of the COG, the COG did not want me, and I admit, I tried to push it on some of the housing bills when there was no time to go back and talk to the full council. So I know that the voting COG members are sensitive to all of this. It won't come out of the blue that we should have some sort of written policy so everybody knows about it. And those are my recommendations, and I've passed them on to the city manager. And unless the council wants to agendize this any further, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Of course.
This is Councilmember Weber. I did have a discussion with Elise today, and I just wanted to explain to the full council that this was on the COG's agenda. And it was considered an urgency type of item because it seems that the day of our COG meeting, there was a deliberation and ultimately a vote on this very item. So there was, I guess there was no opportunity to come before, back to the council. And I think myself and the other city COG members looked at this as a request from a neighbor, in this case, Malibu, to consider this as an urgency item and vote on it. I have to go along with, it was, by the way, when the COG took a vote, it was a unanimous vote to oppose. And then, but when the supervisors took their vote, it was four to one, so the motion passed. But I have to agree with Elise that it certainly makes sense for Nate and the other city managers to discuss something like this at the next act meeting and resolve it that way. So I appreciate the time and I appreciate Elise's comments.
Thank you. I also want to add that my phone and email also blew up right after this vote that I was unaware that the COG had taken. Also reviewed our legislative agenda and internally with our legislative agenda that, as Councilmember Buckley Weber mentioned, was very fine-tuned, this clearly falls outside of what our legislative agenda addresses. So, you know, it really, in my opinion, was inappropriate for Councilmember Weber to speak on behalf of the city of Agoura Hills in this moment. It, you know, didn't reflect the opinions of the rest of the council because we had never had the opportunity to review it and make, form an opinion on it. And going forward, if this is the case and there is an emergency urgency vote, I would request that you abstain from taking a position that you don't know that your council supports unless it falls within our legislative agenda. I just want to remind all of us really that when we break our own norms, it causes a lot of problems and it puts your fellow council members in awkward situations, which is why we have norms. So I'd like some assurances at going forward, whether or not it's an urgency, whether or not it's a priority for another city, that you refrain from taking any votes, as I would on any committee I serve on where it doesn't fall within our legislative agenda. I also agree with Councilmember Buckley Weber that I would like to see the agenda when it comes out every month, if our city manager can forward that to our whole council. And I would like to keep this Los Virginas Malibu Council of Governments update on our intergovernmental special purpose committee and departmental reports on our agenda every month so we can get an update from either you or Mayor Protem Anstead on what is discussed in the COG. Because so many of what we, so much of what we face right now, whether it's climate change, emergency, anything, is a regional homelessness, it's all regional. So this is an important, extremely important committee to serve on. I would hope that, take it, you know, with those comments in mind and understand that you're representing the five of us going forward and that we would have that assurance that it, that it hopefully will never happen again unless it falls within our legislative
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
It might be appropriate for our staff to take a look at our norms and see whether there's some revision that might be appropriate and to address issues that may come before the COG. And if the staff feels that that might be beneficial for the council to make a recommendation to the mayor to put it on a future agenda.
I think that's a great idea. Okay, I see nods from the staff.
I agree with that as well.
Great. Thank you. And thank you to staff for looking into this. Okay, moving on, are there any additional reports in this category from staff or from council? Any other intergovernmental reports? Okay, then we will move to public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. For council chamber attendees, please submit a public comment card to our clerk. For Zoom attendees, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. I will now defer to our city clerk to see if we have any public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. No written public comments were received remotely nor in-house, and we do not have any public speakers in the attendance here. But I will defer to Executive Assistant Amber Victoria if we have any hands raised for live testimony via Zoom. Amber?
Thank you. We do not have any hands raised for this item.
All right.
I'm sorry, I thought I saw an email come across. Did that only come to me from Carol Spinner?
It also came to me, but actually, I'm not sure that it went to the clerk.
Oh.
Now that you say that, I think it might have been addressed to the five of us.
Okay, I'll make sure that I forward that. It's an email from Carol Spinner, and it's actually directed toward, I believe, our next budget workshop. And so I know it's a little tricky because of, you know, remote and what to do, but I'll forward that to you right away, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Councilmember Buckley Weber. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. For council chamber attendees, please submit a public comment card to the clerk. For Zoom attendees, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. I'll once again defer to our city clerk, Kimberly Rodriguez, for any public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. We did not receive any written public comments from outside nor in-house, and we do not have any public speakers in the council chambers. However, we will defer to Executive Assistant Amber Victoria to see if there's any hands raised via Zoom. Amber?
Thank you. No hands are raised for this item.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from any council members about the consent calendar? Or would anyone like to pull any item from the consent calendar? Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know that I actually need to pull them, but I have comments on number six and number eight.
All right.
When you're ready for those. Do you want me to give the comments now?
Do we need to pull them, or can she give the comments now?
We can take the comments if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, on number six, I would just like to request, now that we're all back, not all of us are back together, but, and I should speak for myself, I do not need a paper copy delivered to my house anymore. So save the trees on me. I bring that up because we're talking about a new copy machine, and I don't, I don't need you to deliver a hard copy. Thank you for doing that for the last couple of years. I know that several staff members deliver them to our house, and thank you very much. But I'm going to be optimistic that I'm going to be back here with my iPad, so I don't need that. On number eight, I just wanted to say, and the city manager and I talked briefly about it, but that at our budget workshop, like two weeks ago, we talked about potentially including additional trees to the oak tree ordinance. And so since that scope of work is before us tonight, Mr. Hamburger said that he would talk with the consultant and get an idea. It'll come back to the full council as a budget of what it would include to add the additional trees.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add to that, we've included, for your consideration, that the cost, the dollar figure includes looking into those additional tree species. So that cost is included. And then if there's anything else that needs to come back from studies or work, we will bring those back like you mentioned.
Great, thank you.
I was going to bring up in my council comments that I also don't need the paper anymore. I think the one who's going to be the most upset about this is my dog. He loved when city staff came by to drop off the papers, but also want to reduce the paper waste. So if there are no other questions or comments about the consent calendar, I will go ahead and ask for a motion and a second, and please state your name.
Councilmember Northrup moves to approve the consent calendar.
Councilmember Buckley Weber seconds the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve and adopt the following nine consent calendar items. Number one, approve minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 23, 2022. Number two, approve minutes of the special city council goal-setting workshop of March 9, 2022. Number three, approve minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 9, 2022. Number four, approve demand warrant register, number 868. Number five, approve award of contract with ProStar Mechanical Services for replacement and installation of heating ventilation and air conditioning HVAC boiler for the Civic Center facility. Number six, approve agreement for contractor services, addendum to agreement, with RICO USA Inc., issued under the State of California participating, addendum number 7-19-70-46-06 copiers, and managed print services, Colorado NASPO Value Point Master Agreement 140602. That's a mouthful. Number seven, approve agreement for consultant services with Skyplex Entertainment, does business as Image Resources, for production of special event videos. Number eight, approve agreement for consultant services with Ring Kong Consultants, Inc., for oak tree ordinance amendments. And number nine, adopt resolution number 22-1988, approving the application for grant funds from the recreational trails program. With that, I will defer to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval five to zero.
Thank you. With that, we will move to staff comments. So I know Amy Brink has some updates for us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Klein Lopez and council members. I was sitting here thinking this is a little strange because I wanted to announce our upcoming events. And our first one that's coming, that's going to be an in-person, is Breakfast with the Bunny. And I think literally two years ago to this time, this was the first event that we kind of scrambled and canceled during lockdown. So it's kind of weird that we're opening up again with it, but we are. So we're happy to say, let's get on to the good news. Saturday, April 9, we will be back at the Reyes Adobe Historical Site for Breakfast with the Bunny. We'll have photo ops with the bunny. We're going to have a really large egg hunt for elementary age children. We're going to have a lot of fun crafts for them to do, and we will have very, very COVID-friendly snacks for breakfast when they come. So we're excited about that. We also launched a request for volunteers, and I'm happy to say that we have almost two dozen volunteers already signed up to help out with the event, so we're really excited. And if you haven't seen Breakfast with the Bunny, this is the one where the community services staff literally blankets the park with eggs. And they're already up there stuffing them, so I'm really excited about it. We also, I wanted to also let people know that we are currently taking sign-ups for our community service days, and I will bring back to you, that's not until May, but we are launching the volunteer signup here shortly. We've got five or six amazing projects this year, and the signup will be going, will be blasting out on social media. You can find the information for community service days on our website. That event will be held on Saturday, May 7, from 9:00 a.m. till about noon. And again, we'll be back to launching it from Chumash Park. Again, five or six really exciting projects, so we're looking forward to that. So we're starting to open up again. We're really excited about it. It's like, you know, the community services department is a little bit of caged animals right now. They can't get, they can't wait to kind of get out there and do what they, what they are trained to do, so we're looking forward to that. I'll just remind everybody, visit our website and watch for our social media blast for all the upcoming events. May is going to be a busy month, so I'll bring back to you next month another list of what we're doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other staff comments? No? Council comments? Councilmember Northrup?
Well, I want to congratulate staff on successfully completing our restroom improvement project over at Sumac, and it was so much fun to be there for a real ribbon cutting. And the restrooms look amazing, so thank you. I also want to thank our public works department because I've noticed our new benches and trashcans all around the city. I remember when we approved the design and all of a sudden I was driving down the street and noticed that they've just somehow magically all appeared, and they look really great. So thank you to the team that keeps moving things forward. And I just want to remind everybody to get on the website and check out our Recreation and Event Center because we're starting to have in-person classes, and they look really great. And there's also an opportunity to participate virtually still, I notice, on a lot of them. So at whatever level you feel comfortable, there are opportunities to get involved and participate. I'm really looking forward to getting up there for some of them myself. So team, you keep, you know, just doing a great job. We couldn't be more appreciative, and you're doing some great things for our residents. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I echo the, my gracious thanks to the entire staff for all of the work that you've done over the last two years. Two years ago, as we thought here, I thought as mayor that nothing was going to be able to be done other than shutting down, and you proved me wrong. So thank you for that. You did a great job of pivoting to virtual, and now we're pivoting back to in-person events. So congratulations to all of you. I just wanted to, you know, some of you may have already heard this, but we lost this morning a mountain lion crossing PCH, P104, a sub-adult male, which means young male, killed by a car northbound on PCH. It was just collared two weeks ago. It's very rare that collared mountain lions have crossed PCH. And I bring it up not only because it's just heartbreaking, but because tomorrow night happens to be the Wallace-Annenberg Wildlife Crossing Virtual Open House at 7:00 p.m. To get on to that Zoom call, it's B-I-T dot L-Y forward slash crossing hyphen crossing open crossing house. There's been a lot of PR. I don't know that it's on the city's website, but it's been on Instagram and everything. If you have any problem finding that information, just go ahead and email me or the mayor or any city council member, we have it. So attend tomorrow night so that we can kind of see a small step of what we can do to save our mountain lion population. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, I just, I want to echo Councilmember Buckley Weber's comment about the Zoom wildlife crossing meeting tomorrow. I do believe that you have to register to get the Zoom link. So there's a link, and then you register, and then they'll email you the link. So there's an extra step. So make sure if you want to see the presentation, that you go ahead and actually register for that, for that webinar. I also want to echo the many thanks to our staff, our various departments, particularly the, this week, the bike workshop was great. We had great attendance, both in-person and online, got some great feedback. So thank you to Public Works. And I'm always excited about the community services department. My first ribbon cutting was a restroom. My family's given me a lot of jokes about that, but I think we can all agree that restrooms are really important. So I'm thrilled. So thank you for everything you're doing. And the last thing I want to mention is that tomorrow, in addition to the webinar in the evening, is our first mayor's table that in-person. So tomorrow at 4:00 p.m., if you can sneak out of work a little early, if that's your day, come to taverntamoco/ladyface. I'll be there at 4:00 p.m. Answer any questions you've got. I'll have some trusty staff to answer any questions I can't. But always happy to hear the concerns and questions from residents of Agoura Hills and our surrounding communities. So feel free to join us and look forward to seeing you in-person. With that, seeing no more comments, I will move towards adjournment. So the next regular city council meeting is scheduled for 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, April 13, 2022, in the council chambers of the Civic Center. It is anticipated that members of the public will have the opportunity to participate in-person in the council chambers or by remote video conferencing on Zoom. So at this time, as we adjourn the meeting, I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn, and please state your names.
This is Mayor Protem Chris Anstead. I move for us to adjourn.
Councilmember Buckley Weber seconds the motion.
Thank you. And with that, I will defer to our city clerk for a roll call.
Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Anstead?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez, you have approval five to zero.
Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.